If we could all please rise, the Honorable Councilmember Laura Toye will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Toye. Good evening and welcome to the August 9, 2021, study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,927th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, August 23, 2021. We have all members of the council here with us this evening, and I don't have any announcements to make, but I believe Councilmember McCullough has something that he'd like to share.
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Last week I had the opportunity, big kudos to the Library Commission, the library staff, and especially I want to give a shout out to Nathan Shaw from the library. We had a book discussion about the Ark of Justice for the city's One Book Program that's going on right now. All the information, if you go to the city's website, you can find, there's a ton of programming and events coming up, and actually, the Ark of Justice author will be doing a read, I think, later in October. So, we had a decent crowd online, it was via Zoom, and talked about the life of Dr. Sweet and the tragic events that occurred on Garland Avenue in Detroit. And it's a very powerful book. I know it was recorded, so if you're looking for a good hour of discussion, please feel free to, you know, take a watch on it. But again, I did want to touch base and give huge kudos to Nathan Shaw because he was probably one of the best moderators that we could have, and the event was a big success. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough, very much. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, at this time we go to the audience. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on anything not on this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing none, we will move ahead with the meeting. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting on Monday, August 23, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that we will take up this evening, please approach the podium on either side of the room when the item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is a city or private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium and you're recognized, please state your name and address for the record so that the remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes. It will also let those watching at home and the council members know who is speaking to them. And with that, we proceed with our agenda, beginning with new business. Item number one, is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Justin Ellsworth from Old Rosedale Gardens Homeowner Association to show family-friendly movies beginning at dusk until the end of the movies on Saturday, September 18, 2021, in Clennert Park.
Justin Ellsworth.
And you're going to show some movies? Do you know what movies they are?
Yeah, one movie, actually. I can't stay up that late. So it's going to start at 8:00. It's going to end about 10:00 p.m., but we're going to show The Sandlot this year.
Oh, very good.
Yep.
You're killing me, Smalls.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is in my neighborhood, and I am very happy to offer an approving. This event has gone on in the past, and it's always a great time, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Donovan.
Can I make a quick comment? Great choice. I grew up on that movie, so I can't play baseball, but it's a great idea. Thank you.
All right, are you offering that in consent, Councilmember?
Yes.
All right, so Mr. Ellsworth, you do not have to come back and see us at the next meeting, although you're always welcome.
Thank you.
So enjoy your movie night.
Thank you, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Item number two is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Nick Cornell, General Manager of Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC, to host the Wildwood Sour Fest event on Saturday, August 28, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. with live music and DJs on property located at 36685 Plymouth Road.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I do not see anybody here for this request. And number three is also their request. I'll offer these for approving for the regular to give them an opportunity to show up.
Okay, so we have an approval offered for the regular meeting from Councilmember Jolly for item number two. Item number three is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance, as you recognized, Councilmember Jolly. This also comes from Nick Cornell, General Manager of Supernatural Spirits and Brewing LLC, to hold the Oktoberfest event on Saturday, September 25, from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. with live music and DJs on property located at 36685 Plymouth Road. Mr. Jolly, would you?
I will offer the same approving for the regular to give them an opportunity to appear.
All right. Item number four is a block party request. This comes to us from Louis Palmer with music to be held on Saturday, September 11, 2021, from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Beacon Avenue from Boston Post Road to Dead End of Beacon Avenue with the rain date of Saturday, September 18, 2021. Good evening.
Good evening. And yes, we would love to have a block party.
Okay.
It's in respect and memorance of 9/11.
Okay.
And just to get our neighbors together and, you know, you know.
Yep.
So, you were.
My name is Kimberly Palmer, and the address is 11866 Boston Post Street. I am the Secretary for our Neighborhood Association, and this event came up as a suggestion at our meeting in the spring. And if you know anything about our neighborhood, Alden Village, we've had some challenges the last five years, and this is just going to be a way to be able to reconnect the whole neighborhood, and we've got a lot of new neighbors, and we want to welcome everybody into such a great neighborhood. We love the neighborhood, and so we would really love to be able to get approval to hold this event.
Madam President.
And they have talked to the neighbors that actually live in that section of the road, and everybody is in agreement. They would agree that we could host it on that end of the street.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Toye and then Councilmember Jolly. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, you took a breath, so I said something there. Usually I talk just. Usually it happens to you, I know. Sorry. Maybe an opportunity there. If I may, is this your first, this is your first one to do? Well, congratulations. It sounds like it's going to be a good time, from 2:00 to 10:00, and if it rains on the 11th, you can always celebrate it on the 18th, it looks like, right? So thank you very much for coming in. I'll offer an approving on consent if no one has any objections. Councilmember Jolly, did you?
No objection. I just want to say, great job putting the effort into this to bring the community together. I, it's been, I mean, I think that's, this, like it came to your attention, right? A lot of us up here in our initial terms and our initial couple of months on council, it was one of the first things that we kind of learned about and initially dealt with while you were going through that. So I'm happy to see the neighborhood turning a corner a little bit and working together, and hopefully great things come from us.
Yes, thank you so much. It's bringing the neighborhood together, and we're getting new people in the neighborhood, and it's a way, it's a beautiful neighborhood. It's old, it's from the 40s, and our neighborhood is, part of it was built in 1941, and the other half was built in 45. And we still have a couple of people that are, you know.
Original family.
It's just not that old.
That's, I think every Livonia neighborhood has some of those original people. Even Old Rosedale, I don't know how, but.
Rosedale is very beautiful. Rosedale is very beautiful. Yes.
It's, the whole city is very beautiful. I mean, come on.
We were just saying that when we were sitting in the meeting, the main meeting, we're saying, you know, we just, we love Livonia and just want to support and make sure that it continues to be the great place that, I mean, Lou grew up here his whole life.
Yes.
I moved here when we got together 30 years ago, so obviously.
So we consider you kind of a newcomer.
Yeah, a little bit of a newcomer.
Do you have a passport? Yeah.
Well, it has a lot of history.
It does. I think Mr. Donovan, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Briefly, thank you for acknowledging 9/11. I think that was, when I was looking over the agenda items, I briefly looked at that, the date, and that stuck out to me naturally, and so to your point, you may thank you for acknowledging that. I think as you get those new, younger folks in, I think it's important that we as a community highlight that, so thank you.
Yep, we'll never forget. Yep.
And I'd like to ask you, share some pictures with the city. We have a, you can share them with probably the mayor's office. We always like to see pictures of residents and what's going on in the city, and I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Donovan said. Thank you for hosting this in remembrance of 9/11, and also I don't like to speak for our first responders, but I would guess that maybe if you wanted a police or fire person to stop by, they would probably find somebody to stop by. I'm not promising anything, but you could call the mayor's office to ask about that. And Chief, I hope I'm not out of line, but, you know, they felt very much as we all did, but the losses to their brothers and sisters in New York and D.C. and the first responders in Shanksville that day, so.
Yep, and they continue to be heroes through this whole pandemic, you know.
Yep.
What can you say?
So thank you, and the other thing is, we like to thank people who take the initiative in neighborhoods. Everybody's busy, right? And it takes a lot of effort, and sometimes you feel like you're banging your head against the wall if you have a role in a civic association, right? Because you're trying to get people to participate and come to parties, and it's a lot of work. But the great neighborhoods and the events in our great neighborhoods is really one of the things that makes Livonia so special. So thank you to both of you for your time and leadership.
One more thing, if any of you would like to come, we would appreciate it and love it.
We'd love to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will put the date, we'll ask Ms. Cashworth to put that date and the information on the council calendars.
Okay, so we're good to go.
All right, you're good to go. It's on the consent agenda, so you don't have to come back, but you're always welcome. All right? Thank you so much.
And you are welcome. Thank you.
All right, item number five is a request for additional appropriation expenditure. This comes from the Department of Public Works for additional $25,550 to cover the unexpected increase in cost of previously approved vehicles from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Moore. You haven't been to see us in a while, and do you have any block parties planned?
I do not.
All right.
Softball.
Good evening, yeah, softball.
Bring the chair.
Actually, we're done right now. Good evening, Council Doug Moore with the Public Works Department. Back on May 24, you approved the purchase of three dump trucks with Council Resolution 16621 and 16921. Two of the dump trucks are for the roads maintenance section, one of the dump trucks is for the water and sewer section. Since that time, unfortunately, the price of steel has gone through the roof, and we are faced with an increase of price for the steel bed part of the option of the truck. We own the chassis and the cabs, we don't own the dump part yet. So there is a cost increase for the three vehicles. The dump truck that is just a regular dump truck is $8,850 increase. The dump truck that has the live bottom, which has a conveyor belt which helps move material to the back of the truck, the increase for that is $10,510. And the increase for the water and sewer dump truck is almost $6,200. And we are asking council to approve the extra funding so we can get the beds put on the dump trucks.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, Doug, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for everything that you do for the city. You're also one of these people who goes above and beyond almost in every single circumstance and every interaction that we or the public have with you, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
I understand that this is a serious matter, it's something that I'm going to offer approving for consent, but I can't resist the urge to, I don't know, literally, we own trucks and we can't dump with our dump trucks. I mean, it's among the many different, unique, weird things we've had come before us. We can scratch this one off the list, so I hope we can do our dumping in the near future here.
Yes, me too.
Jeez. Madam President.
It was good.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
I've got childhood book Happy Man and His Dump Truck going through my head now. Know what it was called? Doug, just, no objection, but just one question. You talked about the council cycle time being long enough that it causes a problem with this. How are we sure that we're not going to be dealing with this problem again? Have things just leveled out, or?
When we, if council does approve this through the consent agenda, we will plan on asking the mayor's office for a no veto letter. It'd be two weeks from next Tuesday. That will cut two weeks off the process, so we do not have to wait for the meeting minutes to be read. That will get us into the window that these prices are being held for, because unfortunately now, there always was a window for the price to be held, but it was one of those wink-wink, handshake kind of things back when times were normal, and unfortunately now they aren't. So we know now, unfortunately, that we've got to expedite things through the process to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to do also.
Got it, thanks.
All right, it's been offered on consent from Councilmember Jolly. I think we're all set.
Cool, thank you very much, council.
Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Item number six is a request to approve an hourly rate increase. This comes from the Department of Civil Service for the classification of seasonal laborers. Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. Paul.
I come before you this evening once again to request consideration of a pay increase for our seasonal laborers. Our seasonal laborers perform a critical role in the Department of Public Works during the warmer weather months. They supplement our regular workforce and perform a variety of duties, including grasscutting, laying sod, planting flowers, weeding beds, cleaning parks, patching roads, washing windows, painting, branch and brush chipping, athletic field maintenance, and the list goes on. This classification has not had a pay increase since 2016, so we are seeking this evening to increase their pay, and if council approves, we would like to increase it immediate, increase the pay rates immediately. The original request that was sent to commission was actually for the rates to be increased January 2022, and the commission thought that that was waiting too long. So they've, they are actually, their resolution includes an amendment to the original request seeking that the hourly rate increase be effective the first pay period after city council approves. So we would also be seeking a non-veto letter.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So one would presume that there might be people watching this meeting out there somewhere. Can you indicate for that audience what the pay increases would be?
Of course.
Because there might be some grandparents, parents, or potential workers themselves watching the meeting.
Of course.
Who might find this interesting.
Okay.
And want to apply.
The current, the current pay rate for season one, because as they return to us, we've had some very loyal seasonal laborers that return year after year. The first season currently is $11 an hour, second season is $11.50, and the third season is $12. What we're seeking is $12 for the first season, $12.50 for the second season, $13 for the third season. And then another increase January of 2023 to $1,250, $13, and $13.50. And then January 2024, $13 an hour, $13.50, and $14 an hour the third year.
Okay, I think those, those amounts make sense, particularly as we get further down the road here. Did you do benchmarking with other communities in terms of what they pay for similar?
Yes.
And this is in line with those parameters?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'll offer it for consent, approving.
Councilmember Barr and then Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah, Denise, you said, or you didn't say it tonight, but it's in our packet, that we're about 20 to 25 down this year. Has it been the case all summer?
Yes.
Okay. I'm curious, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I wanted to say that not only are we having difficulty hiring them, but we're also losing them, so it's both ways.
Do you have a sense of where they're going? Not like specifically what, but is there a certain sector they're going to or anything?
Our loyal seasonals did not, because of the coronavirus, didn't come back last year, and then we've lost them this year. This time of year, we always lost them to go back to college anyway, so we were always running up against the wall this time of year. We have 10 this year compared to probably 35 in 2019, and 20 go back to college. This year we had 10, and two are leaving, so the percentage is even more. I, I just, I don't know where they went. I just don't think they came back.
And what types of jobs are these? Just some examples. They're doing what?
They'd be out with the mowing crew, mowing parks, lining athletic fields, working at Bicentennial Park, doing the field prop, that kind of thing.
You talked about wanting this immediately, you know, even with a non-veto letter, we're looking at this being end of August. Is it still even relevant at this point? Is there a major hazard in waiting till January 2022?
Major hazard, no, because you're not hiring them right now.
No. We always had difficulties finding them in September, October anyway, because the applications we looked at were old, people weren't applying.
And the reason I ask that is ultimately leading to this. Denise, we obviously just voted on a regular meeting tonight on this for Parks and Rec. We've got this item here, our next item is a similar type of thing. In your judgment, are we going to be seeing a number more of these?
Yes.
Okay, with that in mind, it's not, every, your rationale all makes sense, but I think it would behoove us as a council, rather than piecemealing this, to be able to look at this all at once. I'd like to propose that we put into, I guess it'd be committee of the whole. I'd like to put in committee of the whole this topic to look at this all cohesively and see if we can just understand what all we're going to be looking at. I understand the market realities, but rather than doing this piecemeal every meeting, I think it would behoove us to look at it all at once. So I'd offer to put in the committee of the whole the subject of, for lack of better words, wage increases due to current market realities.
Madam President, through the chair, we're basically done with the temporary type positions as far as getting them through and getting them adjusted. The other classifications are union or unrepresented, and those are all part of collective bargaining. So.
Okay, so just as part of the regular.
When I say, yes.
So you don't anticipate, to your knowledge, you don't anticipate any more of these with temporary, or I'm getting ahead of myself, but we've got a substitute librarian one coming up.
Right.
In your judgment, is that the last of these that we're going to see in the near future?
When I answer affirmatively to, are you going to see me again? That's because we do have another department, but it's actually full-time positions, that we will be bringing forward to you. So, but other than that, a lot of our, well, and also transit will be coming forward, but we're almost through the temporary positions, so.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, I'll withdraw my motion. We can just handle these tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember McCullough, are you all set?
Oh, no. I guess it wasn't technically a motion, it's a study meeting, but I'm withdrawing that for this meeting.
So did you want to, did you want to offer anything? No. Okay, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, to Denise, I guess it's probably more of a statement. I know, knowing, being on the other side of, during my day job, we would always have to hire 20 seasonals, and it was a game. Honestly, you would want to fill that up, and anybody that could fill out the application and want to come to work and go through the background, they're going to get a job. And to listen that we have 10 out of a potential 35, and looking at these numbers, they're significantly low compared to the surrounding areas. I know at my former employer that there was offering incentives when the college kids went back to school for any of them that were local. I think it was $100 extra on a paycheck if they stayed. So just to put it in perspective, having that knowledge base, I think these are, you know, and even Mr. Moore, I think that you might want to be able to pick up some people if there's someone out there, and this might help, you know, at least maybe to pick up two or three people to help you with the winter. So I think these are imperative, I think they're great moves, and happy to support.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly and then Donovan.
So I had mentioned when we talked about the recreation center employees, and we were talking about giving them a temporary pay increase, exploring possible options for creative solutions here, right? Would this, if we're primarily relying upon college students to fill these summer positions, and I mean, going back 15 years, I remember seeing them, they're gators around the municipal campus and everywhere else, has there been an exploration at all of possibly offering them like, and, you know, if they start with us at the beginning of the summer and they make it all the way through their return to college, we give them like some sort of like, potentially like a small scholarship incentive that either we could pay for, or maybe we can partner with a community organization to pay for, or something like that? Because, I mean, we hear about, you know, the lack of, I mean, it's not necessarily connected in a way, but these people are doing, you know, significant work for us as a city, but they're also pursuing themselves a different educational path as well, and it kind of puts them a little bit more hand in hand there to give them something to kind of return to and have an incentive to stay for the whole year. Just a thought.
That's a very good thought, and I think we have time, because the season is coming to an end for the seasonal laborers, we do have time to discuss that and to look at options that are similar to that, so I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, and I know we're always cautious about money coming out of the city coffers, taxpayer funds and stuff like that, but as we saw earlier tonight, there are a lot of generous people and organizations in the community who may have an interest in doing that as well, because this is how we get our younger people, college students and other people, involved early on in our community and having some kind of connection with the city and maybe staying and adding more value in the future.
Exactly, and to what, to Doug's point of the loyal seasonal laborers that we've had, they didn't come back after, you know, COVID-19, but that doesn't mean we couldn't get that repeat, repeat again going.
I think it'd be a good sell.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Donovan and then Councilmember Toye.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for being here, Ms. Mayor and Mr. Moore. How often do we have our seasoned employees that decide they want to continue working with the city of Livonia and maybe become the next, you know, Doug Moore? I mean, do we have those seasonal employees that like the public service work?
We have, we have a couple that have been with us 10 years that have returned. They're, we have a hand, well, it's more than handful, it was always about 10, 15 that would start with us right at the beginning of May and work through until just at the end of leaf season. And we counted on them every year, every year they were back. And they were, most of them were retirees, and they got to the point where they just aged out of being able to do that.
Well, recently we had a meeting with, a committee meeting with both chiefs from the PD and FD about programs to attract youth to come into that profession, and I just wondered, there are young people that are going to school that maybe they want to work future careers in DPW and whatnot, and I just didn't know if there was programs or any sort of incentives, or that discussion with these college students said, hey, you can have a really great career in DPW and municipal work in different capacities, and I just wondered if there was ever any thought, any program or any discussion, any educational opportunities for those young people that, hey, I know you're raking leaves and picking up trash right now, but one day you could be sitting in an office presenting before city councils, so.
Right, it's another option.
Who doesn't want to do that?
Yeah.
You're a garbage person.
What's so funny?
That may backfire, there's only so many people who want to be punished.
They can retire.
Thank you both for being here. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Toye. Okay, this one's going to get me in trouble, real trouble. Have we ever thought about privatizing that part of the lawn mowing or whatever? I mean, I understand that we want to give all these incentives, I understand there's lack of employment, I also understand that there's people out there that do want to work. I've had two of them come in my store in the last week. So it's not all, I mean, it's bleak, and I get that, and I get other cities are having problems, but have we ever thought of new venues to do rather than give, give, give more money? A lot of times that's not the total answer, maybe, but I think as Barr, Councilman Barr just said, we're kind of looking at this, we're looking at that, and it's almost like we need to take it and get our arms around it somehow. And I know it's frustrating for you guys, too. I'm not trying to, you know, cast bad dispersions on it, I'm just saying, I don't want to say I'm just saying, I, I don't want to say privatization, but I do, because mowing lawns is, is something that, you know, a lot of folks do. And I realize some of these landscaping places are busy and you can't get them and all that. But there's individuals and people out there that do it just for extra money right now. You know, so have we looked at anything like that in the past or present?
One-third of our parks are cut by a contractor. The parks that do not have, most of them do not have recreational features, they're just open area.
Good to know.
That we do that with. We're, we're trying to keep a handle on the parks where people are visiting because we know we can take care of them better, and we visit them more frequently.
Yeah. And I know it's frustrating for you. Don't get me wrong. I empathize and all that. I'm just trying to say, can we move that to other venues so that you don't have to keep coming back to us? You know, possibly. Is that sensible? I don't know. You run, you run your program, not me, but yeah. I just wondered. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so we had that offered on consent by Councilmember Jolly. All right, going on. Item number seven is a request to approve an hourly rate increase. This too comes us from the Department of Civil Service for the classification of substitute librarian. Ms. Mayor and Ms. Laporte.
Thank you. I would like to open with the fact that our substitute librarian position has not had an increase for 14 years. And this is why our library director brought it to our attention. This position does require a master's degree in library and information science, and it was, it's currently paying $1.26 per hour less than a temporary clerk. So, this is, this is something that we probably should have looked at previously. But it, it was brought to our attention and the commission approved it. And we currently have a list of substitute librarians, right? I think there's like 13 names, so we've got a healthy list. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Madam Chair.
I'll defer to.
Uh, Councilmember White.
When I looked at this, I was quite frankly shocked at the, at the pay rate being so low for people that have a master's degree in library and information science. So, I fully support this, and I'll offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
Support.
Just a couple of words.
Councilmember Jolly.
I absolutely support this. And so, my mother-in-law is, later in life, went and got her master of library science. And I, I, through her eyes, I, I'm able to see that it's actually quite a grueling program. People don't think about this being, I don't want to say not a profession, but I mean, we think of like doctors, lawyers, these kind of things. This is quite a, a program that these people have to go through, and they should be compensated accordingly. So, I'm happy to support this, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Council or Vice President Barr?
So, just wanted to try to understand the market need. It's one thing to talk about education requirements, but you said we have, we haven't needed these for the last year and a half for obvious reasons because of the pandemic. But we have a pool out there of, of substitute librarians that we've used in the past. Have we seen evidence that we're losing this, losing these people?
No.
Okay.
Well, at least as far as I know, we have called three of our regulars back.
Tony, can, can you make sure you're speaking into the microphone just so we pick it up for the, thank you.
So, we've, we've called about three of our regular substitute librarians since we started opening up for business. We will be contacting more of them in September when we open on Saturdays and Sundays. And I'm hoping, you know, we're going to call them before that time. But I'm hoping that we still have that many that are on the list, and they haven't moved on or decided to retire, so.
So, we're not sure yet?
We're not sure yet.
Okay. And these substitute librarians, they're, I assume from the, the title, it's when our, our full-time librarians are on vacation or sick or whatever. This, it's not a regular thing. It's a, okay.
It's usually a four-hour stint.
Got it. And we didn't have, we weren't having an issue prior to the pandemic with keeping these people on?
No.
Okay. Because I know, and I'm not trying to be the curmudgeon here, it's never fun being the guy asking these questions, but this one I struggle with a little bit more only just from a, from a market need perspective. It's, it's, yeah, I, I understand it hasn't had a rage, a raise, we can say, in, in 14 years, but from a market perspective, it sounds like that hasn't been an issue. And, and then like with the master's degree, we say we pay them for the education. But I guess the, the other question I would have, and I mean, no, no disrespect to anybody when I say this, but when we're talking about a, a substitute position, you know, the last one, Councilman Jolly talked about thinking creatively about this. So, my, my question is, do we need a master's degree for those? And it's not, it's not to take away from the degree. The, the question is, does that potentially open up a greater pool of people that would be, I mean, and I'll just say, I'm not going to mention names here, but I know people that have filled in as substitute librarians with, without, on, on extended periods in other cities without that level of education and have been able to perform the job fine. So, just, that's the question I have. Why, why do we need to require that as a qualification for a substitute? I'm not asking for the full-time.
Well, we feel it's important that our librarians have library degrees. It's just something that we feel is, is necessary.
It's a requirement for all of our full-time, right?
Right, right.
For the full-time and not for the subs, correct?
Right. But they're basically doing almost the same job. So, why would we have someone with a lesser degree filling in for them?
Well, I, are they do, I mean, because when you, whenever, let's take in schools, for example. A substitute teacher in one sense is doing the same job as a full-time teacher, but in another sense, very much isn't. They're not doing the long-term planning, they're not doing the strategic planning, all those kind of things. So, I, I think there is a difference between the two.
Right, there is a difference, but they're still doing reference work.
Sure.
People still come to them with questions that a lot of times other people don't know the answers to.
Okay. I just, I'm looking at, what we're looking at here is a 25% wage increase for something that I haven't heard evidence that we have a market need for. That's where I start with this. I would ask for this to be on the regular, please.
Councilmember Danovic.
Thank you, Madam President. How many seasonal, excuse me, substitute librarians do we have currently?
About 13.
About 13. And then how many of the full-time librarians do we have?
Oh, wow. About maybe 15.
Okay, and those are spread out between?
Sandberg and Civic.
Okay. And the ones that, the substitute librarians, those will fill in where, wherever they're needed, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. Just a general statement. Looking over the numbers in the packet, the numbers right now, obviously, the current amounts are historically low. We're talking 14, 15 years is what you were saying before we had any increases. And I know that some of the staff that might have been sticking along, I give them a huge amount of credit for sticking around and, and, you know, pledging their loyalty and, and giving us, you know, you know, all, the shirt off their back for the last however many years. I think that this increase makes us competitive. It also provides us, you know, a, a way to, to let our employees know that we're going to take care of them, especially the 13 that are there. And then as these librarians move on, it's also going to keep the competitiveness, so we're not going to be sitting there having an issue for retention. So, this is something that I think is, is much needed overdue and something I'll be supporting. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we have that on the regular agenda for the August, is it the 26th, 20, August 26th meeting? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor and Ms. Laporte.
Thank you.
All right, item number eight is a request for approval to enter into an agreement between SMART and the City of Livonia. This comes from the Livonia Housing Commission for the municipal credit contract for the period July 1st, 2020.
2022. That's what I.
2022. And is that through June 30th, 2023?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, I'm just requesting.
With all credits to be used for Livonia Community Transit Program?
That is correct. So, once a year, we are able to receive municipal credits in approximately $95,000. This is a grant that goes to support our community transit department, which operates 22 buses and provides transportation to Livonia seniors to go to shopping, medical appointments, the VA in Ann Arbor, both by appointment and non-appointment.
Madam Chair. Yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you. This program is just super worthwhile for seniors and others that need it. And I will ask that we renew this contract and give it our blessing on consent.
All right. Councilmember Danovic, then Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, I was at the VFW recently, and one of the veterans that had walked in there said that him and a friend of his had used this transportation system before to actually get to the VA hospital. They're, they're dropped off somewhere, and there's like a carpool or.
Westland.
Yeah, there's a bar, a bus pool of some sort area, and another bus picks them up from there and takes them out. So, I've, I heard some good things about it, and I know sometimes our veterans have a difficult time getting out to either Ann Arbor. But my question was, does this bus route, do they also have an option to go to Detroit, or is it only Ann Arbor?
Only Ann Arbor.
Only Ann Arbor. Why is that? Do you know why, or?
I think that's just how it was originally set up. I don't know that we've had a demand to go to the Detroit VA.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Brandy, thanks for being here. Thanks for bringing this before us. It's obviously a good program. It's been working. I want to thank Mr. Deal for all the work that he does for our community. He's a, we, we oftentimes have these people who serve on the commissions, and they attend some meetings here and there, and, and that's very valuable. Mr. Deal was a frequent volunteer at the vaccination clinics at the senior center almost throughout. He was very noticeable in assisting people in the waiting room before they could leave. I know myself and some other people on council had an opportunity to volunteer with him, and he was just a great spirit and very encouraging to everybody. So, I just want to take a moment to thank him for being here tonight and also for everything he does for our community. Thank you. Not, not at all necessary, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Councilmember Barr, or Vice President Barr?
Thank you. No issues with it, Brandy, but I asked this question shortly after I came on council, and I need to ask it again because I need a refresher. This, so this is just for my education. I don't have any issues with approving this. Can you help me understand, anybody that might be interested watching, why we, sorry, I was just looking at the question I'd written down. Why do we get funding for this through SMART when we're not paying into SMART? Just what exactly is going on here?
It's to supplement our operating expenses. So, we do receive money through the village, but that only supports about $800,000, and our operating expenses are over a million. So, we do receive some special grants through SMART to help support our operations.
So, is, is SMART, those extra $300,000 of services or whatever, is SMART providing some of those services for us?
No, no.
So, we're providing them?
We provide all the services. They do assist us with vehicles, to purchase vehicles, to, uh, last year, we received a grant to purchase a mobility vehicle to assist those that are physically disabled.
So, we're getting grants through SMART. Is, is that federal funding that's just coming through SMART?
Yes.
Okay, I think that answers the core of my question. All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
And, and like I said, I know I asked that question shortly after I came on here, but I couldn't remember what the answer was.
Yeah, we operate our entire transit program, but we do receive some additional funding to help support it.
All right, anyone else? All right, item number nine. This is an audit report. This comes us from the Livonia Housing Commission for the fiscal year ending December 30th, 2020, excluding Silver Village, Newburgh Village, the Community Development Block Grant Problem, Community Development Block Grant Program and Single Family City-Owned Properties.
So, many of you guys know all of our programs that we operate through Silver Village, Community Development, our foods programs, transportation, but the Housing Commission also operates a public housing program, a Section 8 program, a capital fund program, and we did receive some CARES Act money this year. So, those programs are actually audited under the Housing Commission Independent Audit and not under Plant and Moran. So, once a year, we go through an audit, this year it was in June, to evaluate our revenues and expenditures, and we have no findings. So, I am just going to present this to you to receive and file.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mm-mm.
I, I just, I have one. So, we do the, we do the audit ourselves, Brandy?
No, we actually hire a independent company to come in and audit.
Okay, so like a CPA firm or?
Yep, it's Smith and, I don't want to botch his name, Klipchumets.
Okay. All right.
They're, they're actually out of Iron Mountain, I do believe, or San Antonio.
All right. Thank you.
I remember. We've had two different auditors over the last couple of years, so.
Well, thank you for, uh, thank you for the information that we will receive and file, and thank you again for everything you do. All right, this time, we go back to the audience, going once, going twice. I don't see anyone that wants to communicate with us. So, we are adjourned. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, Livonia TV, and thank you to everyone who was with us this evening.